Committee meeting on September eleventh, twenty twenty-five at five thirty P M. We get an adoption of the agenda, please.
That's a move.
One second. All that's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here and none. Uh, can we get approval of minutes from May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five to this meeting?
That's a move. Why would you just?
Mr. Monroe?
You want to give our overview of that? Please. We just looked at them all together.
Do you have this, Monroe? I don't have the minutes.
It was something that was missing out of the minutes?
There may be particular item that you. Uh, he had something in reference to a number of references with termites, uh, and the leafs that, uh, that I did. We have a termite agreement with Terminus.
Yes.
They did go up there and treat the facility. Uh, I had, uh, a roofing company, cause we do have a warranty on roof and I submitted that. And I have their, well, they took care of it. So that's on that.
Something else we missed up.
The Alcoa Learning Pavilion is, uh, an M L K. Uh, as far as getting updated on that, we basically, uh, to finish, uh, other than a few minor things. You should be completely with that. When will we, uh, when will it like some of that? Cause then you lagged an M L K.
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Reflect what we voted on, not what you were going to do.
Okay. Trying to just go along with this. I look less issues with, when I hear about this leak and termites. I just, it's just, I wasn't prepared for this tonight on anything, so I, I just, I would just say, give me time.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, so I wasn't prepared for this. Thank you.
All that's in favor say aye. All opposed, here and none. We're gonna dive right into our new business, uh, and, and just for the record, uh, committee meeting, committee members or members, just anything that needs to be added to the agenda, if, if it was put out in a timely manner, let's, let's just communicate so everybody can be able to be prepared for, uh, whatever questions that, that you all may have, so we can address them. And then we can kind of move forward, so everybody can get the understanding that they're seeking. Appreciate you. Uh, right into new business, getting into the punch list update on the Carroll High School van. I don't see any representative from Land Three here, so I guess we'll refer, uh, to superintendent, you can direct accordingly.
All right, well, uh, we did, uh, receive communication from Land Three D M S Monroe, uh, and they, I forwarded that email to the board in reference to them addressing the punch list and also in reference to the, uh, the new, uh, ticket booth at Carroll High School, uh, that they have indicated that they no longer want to do the project, uh, and they would, they want to charge us for what they've done thus far. Uh, but they didn't want to come to, to the meeting, uh, to be bashed and to be tipped and beat up all that. You couldn't stand my shit. But yeah, they, they, Mr. Monroe, I'll let you elaborate on the Land Three basically has walked away.
I could just leave you a little bit on what I got on this, uh, I did somehow they noticed them in reference to attend our meeting tonight to discuss the issues that we have. They had turned, uh, sent me an email responding that because of, I guess, previous meetings, how they were kind of taking on a lot of heat and everything, that they, uh, they don't have a problem with meeting with a small group that can come out and to meet with a large group and be reticuted or whatever, uh, they said it just was, uh, due, so. Being that, being that, uh.
I got you, I got you, that's cool.
We, uh, we have, uh, they also, uh, noted that they're actually doing some things on their own that they felt that was negative on their behalf to try to come to an agreement, to try to be, uh, I guess, to work with the students, so they're doing some things outside of what's, uh, what they thought they were, didn't have to do. Uh, they've asked to give them into fall breaks that school is in, some things that they can't do while school is in session. So as of today, I told them that they want to know the next time that students will be away, I told them they'd be out on the tent and also, uh, the week of fall break. So they should be contractor and architect along with their, they want to be doing, should be finished by then.
Okay, well.
Let me give you an update on that.
Okay, uh, we're gonna take some questions from the committee, then other board members that, that's present and then any community, uh, members from there. We're gonna make sure we keep everything decent and in order, please, uh, and then we'll go accordingly. And I, I guess I will start, uh, so. Did they tell you where we at on the punch list? Because that's what the agenda items.
Yes, as far as on the punch list, as of today, they have a few things that you noted in, in their letter that they are gonna be doing. They're responsible for doing that. They want to do it during the week of fall break. So those, those few items that they had on there, they're gonna address. The items that the contractor that still have open, uh, he say they'll be finished next week, but we also just say let's have it all done, cause it's kind of hard being there while they're practicing and everything. So week of fall break, they should come to the conclusion and we should be putting everything on that punch.
Okay.
So I can only go back on what they have on their punch list, the last punch list I got was August the seventh.
Okay, so, so with the things that are on the punch list and the things that we all pointed out, uh, along with myself, you, uh, Dr. Watson, uh, Miss, Mrs. Seffler and Miss Moore, have we all, have we been, because at this point, you need to monitor them, so have that.
And there again, on that meeting on that day that we had that meeting, cause I have a signing sheet on everyone, there were things that were stated that I've been here, but they say they didn't say. So there again, uh, what a small party of individuals that was there, I'm quite sure I can get a meeting and they can, everybody be on the same page. Because if you weren't standing there and getting here for yourself, I can't force them to do something that they say they didn't say. But someone else heard, said something.
They, they got a whole video on the whole meeting.
Right, so that will may have to come into play, I'll let you all address that. But, but we, we do have everything from the August the seventh meeting, uh, there again, I have the signing sheet, so I know everybody that was there. Uh, and I can call a meeting to address that, but I would ask that if we give them to fall break, anything beyond that, we can just make whatever we need to.
One question is, they have a legal contractual obligation. Am I correct, Attorney Lawrence?
Absolutely, we do.
And now we're, we're jeopardizing running into that time period for this to be completed. And if that, that doesn't happen and we get outside that window, then what does it leave the district? This should be liable for getting done unless we take some legal actions from our.
Was that time November? What, what was that, that line, when they had to leave everything completed, that, was that September?
They didn't give the specific date.
The day that we got the substantial completion.
That's, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, I can give you, the certificate of completion was August the twenty-sixth of twenty-fourth.
We passed the date.
That was substantial completion and you have, after that, you, they have forty-five days, but we've identified the discrepancies, so that, that before that date, so we should be in good standard there. Right, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. The fifteen islands list on the list, the punch list, uh, can you please share with us, myself and the audience, what the fifteen islands are?
Fifteen?
Is that what you're saying?
No, no, ma'am, it's a whole lot.
I didn't hear, I can't hear you very well.
Okay, I'm sorry, we, we, prior to opening, they did a punch list. It was dated June second. So after trying right before we take over as far as certificate, August, they had to redo another punch. So that one was done in August the seventh. So that's the one, that's the most recent punch list that they have. Now, as far as the date that we met out there with the board members, I have that, uh. I have it just in a minute.
Mr. Johnson, will we relate to that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore, I'm assuming those were the architects' words and adjectives that you use as just the tenor of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Not yours, but.
No, no.
Those adjectives, in my regulation, the questions were asked in a professional way and they had a number of them and, uh, they couldn't answer all the questions, but, uh, I, I, I don't think they were put upon to any degree or anything like that, I just wanted to clear the record.
Correct, that's, 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 that's Man Three's response to Mr. Monroe's invitation to the meeting on today.
Mr. Monroe, don't worry about that, let, let's just make sure that, and if, Mr. Lawrence, uh, if you could collaborate with Mr. Monroe and Dr. Watson, uh, with that situation, I want to make sure that we are in legal standards to make sure that anything that they do pass at certain window, that we are not liable for to pay for it on our own, because this is their mess up. So with that being said, uh, I would recommend, and I, I'm only one seven, uh, but if we need to take legal actions to make sure we do what we need to do, that's what I will be leaning towards, uh, from my, from my standpoint, because it's, it's too much that we put into there to what we got out of it. Yes, sir.
I want to share this. Mr. Moore, one question. We still hold the payments, correct?
Most of the payments is paid.
Were they paid in full?
The payments is paid, it's been signed off by the architect, it's been signed off by the contractor, for what they was obligated to do after forty-five days. Uh, and I got the date that that was signed.
So architect, the architect is a job and see, continue to do everything else.
I'm gonna share this, yes, sir, please, let it out forward to the board. Says Mr. Monroe, unfortunately, we will not be able to attend the facilities meeting early today. We believe that emotionally charged public meetings are not the appropriate setting to fully address the technical aspects related to the van building. Mr. Hempfield and I are open to constructive dialogue with a smaller group, by the way, we have that at the site. I have attached the letter responding to the previous issues. Although we have completed the ticket booth design, we would prefer for another firm to do this project. We will not charge for our work, nor can our plans be used for construction. We can share our files with whoever you prefer, or they can start from scratch, thank you, the Land Architects.
Okay, so what we'll do, we'll move forward, uh, this, uh, Mr. Lawrence, I'm sorry, Miss, Miss Haylon.
I wanted to ask if, uh, the facilities committee, we can authorize our attorney to look forward with lawsuit against Land Three Architecture?
Okay, um, with that not being on the agenda, I, I don't know if we need to take that to the, we need to go directly to full board? Or should it come from here at another meeting? Uh, but I am in agreeance, I am in agreeance, but I just want to be in order as well, uh.
I understand, we've, we've been talking about this for so long and I think, I, I thought we were moving in that direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Whenever we're, so I want to make it formal.
And so what I make a note is, and Miss Robinson, if you do the same for me, please, uh, at our next facilities meeting, which I will have to look like call pretty soon, uh, for that sake, if we got to do it for that sake, we can kind of go from there.
Can you add it to the agenda by adding the unanimous approval today?
Even after the approval, well, yeah, we can. So is that your recommendation, Miss Lawrence?
That would be my recommendation, right, once you do it, listen, I mean, just, cause we clearly, real clear on this. To authorize a lawsuit, ideally, we want the entire board to do it, but listen, we can get things started, because you can always stop the progress of the lawsuit. It's a matter of, I'm concerned about deadlines at this point.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think in light of that, we need to get things started, if that's the direction we're going in. And we can always stop or reverse if that's not what we want to do, so that's my recommendation.
If that being an injunction, Miss Lawrence, what type?
Well, an injunction would be to stop something that's in progress now.
Not to stop.
In this instance, it would be a request for a specific.
Form is that, right.
That property.
And we have standing.
Oh, yes, sir. And, and they have an insurance policy.
Right.
Mr. Lawrence, so is that something that we need to adhere, or that's just straight full board, it doesn't have to come from committee to it?
It does not have to come from committee, but if y'all feel better about it, you can have it come from committee.
You can just go full board, you can just go full board, Miss Cooper is here, uh, it could be your will and pleasure, but as a board member, I am requesting that we put that on our next full board meet, uh, agenda, uh, to try to move forward with that, uh.
Chairman Johnson, won't you make, uh, have some made voting, second, you voted to go, that way you have that on record.
Well, we have to add it to the agenda.
If you got a unanimous, you can add to the agenda, if y'all.
But he said if we don't have to, so.
Okay, this one of the dollars on the level is, if y'all can do that, fine.
Well, that's fine, but we'll, we'll move forward, we'll, we'll try to get that to the full board, uh, the president is here, uh, and we can kind of go from there. Uh, so if we would move on with this current agenda and go to the approval to move forward with the Carroll High School ticket booth, so based on that information that we have received, uh, I would hate to do this without, uh, Darren Berry being here with, you know, he's the main, uh, board member of that district. Uh, however, we need to assign another architect. Yeah. So I, I know we need to assign another architect for this ticket booth, uh, I see you, Miss Press, I'm coming to you, as soon as I can do it. And I got you, I see you, um, so in order to move forward, we need to. If that's, if that's y'all will and players, if y'all want to put it off. But that's gonna put it off. You can, you can, you can make a, you can raise a recommendation and if we go to full board.
So, Mr. Bennett, sorry. Mr. Bennett?
Question was for Mr. Sally Immel Building, Fred Bennett's firm.
Fred Bennett, yes, of course.
Or Architect Sutton.
Okay, so what we'll do is, um, I hear Michelle is speaking about M three eight.
That's fair enough.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Can you guys speak in the microphone when you're speaking, I can't hear anything you're.
I'm gonna speak louder than that.
Talking about getting, now you, the every architects to give us a bid on, on the.
Hold on.
On the Carroll food lines. And the one that comes up with the, with the, uh, prob, uh, bid will, will accept that, okay.
The legislature just adopted an act that says you can't do bids on architects.
Okay.
I mean, they just did. I, and I, I just wanted to tell y'all, in other, in other words, I'm not saying you can't listen to what their price is, but you can't say it's gonna be a bid process and we're gonna choose the lower.
Cause you can individually go out and ask.
You can't.
Charge me, so you can do your own due diligence.
Right, the, 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 the takeaway is, you can't say we're going with the low price.
Correct.
And so I just wanted to tell you.
So to clarify, we can still get three estimates, but it's not a formal bid process.
And you.
Can't go below.
And make sure, and make sure you don't say, we're going with so and so because they were cheap.
Right.
All right, let's come back to order, please, if we don't mind, and let's come back to order. All right, Mr. Wilson, do you have a question? Miss Haylon? Miss Cooper?
No questions.
All right, now we'll go to the invited to public, Miss Crusher.
May I know that is submitted to Carroll High School, may we get a list of the punch list that is not there, that they have not completed, we would like to know what. Second thing, on, um, who's going to write the description of the press box, will that come from?
The press box.
At Carroll High School?
No, we, we talking about a ticket booth.
A ticket?
Ticket booth. Ticket booth. The ticket booth would be cut out behind the old choir room, is that correct, the old choir room? Uh, we had, uh, we, uh, we had a design that was done by M three X, not M three X, I'm sorry, Land Three. We had a, a design that was done by Land Three already, but since they made the decision, uh, to not do it, at this point, we have to find another architect to get it done and kind of move forward if we're gonna go ahead and move forward with the project.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed, I thought it, well, whatever.
All the press boxes has was done last year, before last. Yeah, that, that, that's something old that we had already discussed, that's already been.
But I understand, who, you know, it's how you write it, even if you go to an arch, to an architect.
Well, it, it gotta go to an architect so we can get the contract that was done.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am. All right, uh, so at, at this point, recommendations from me, superintendent Moore, with other situations.
I'd like to make a motion, please, to, uh, for the Carroll booth, that we, uh, table this until we talk to a, an architect who, if you had to, who would be glad to take this project, this very small project. So we're, we're not looking at a lot of money, can we, can we do that?
Mr. Moore? That, that was a motion, so do you plan?
Yeah, I'm here, Mr. Moore, that's right. So you know, I, I, I kind of, you know, there again, this is a small project, we're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so, uh, and, 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 you know, and I, I agree, Mr. McCall has done great work for us, I know Mr. Bennett, they're local, they just recently did great work, uh, with whatever board it is, but I, I don't think, I think they would be timely. Uh, it's just, I think whatever board it is, whatever you guys decide, but we have to remember, uh, the new law that governs, uh, hiring architects.
So you do have to hire an architect?
You do.
You do.
Even I want to come this amount, okay, this, this is the fact, I'm sorry, this president.
This is the fact that you're doing construction, it's not so much the amount of construction.
I, I didn't know if there was a dollar in that.
Yes, construction. What is the law for that, cause I mean, if we do any kind of construction to a school, we have to hire an architect?
Yeah, we had some applications to it based on the Bob Odom move.
Yes.
Where he was using the Department of Agriculture, uh, doing some, I think, so. Moore, report me on this, it was fifty thousand dollars where you use your old people.
Okay, that's enough.
To do construction, uh, whether that's any stuff, but, but on designs, uh, you, you need an architect, you got code issues and everything else that you need to protect yourself on, so.
Well, the only thing, the only thing with it, and, and I, now I could be wrong, if you don't go ahead and accept, well, try to make a recommendation to take to the full board at this point, you'll be waiting and putting the project off even longer to whatever time. It's the will and pleasure of, of this committee to take to the board, I'll find either way that you decide to go. But I want to hear from this committee, please. Yes, this committee, so we can take a recommendation to the.
McCall, yes, McCall, in all the projects, so it's outside of my, including what we came, what Watson High School. All of that. Well, we can talk to you, that's kind of obvious, we did.
So, so, so we have no recommendation from, from this committee? So, so please, somebody, just, let, let's fix it, let's make a motion to table it. Make a, make a, make a motion to table it, and then we'll bring it back to, uh, at the next committee meeting, but y'all must understand, must, must, must understand that, that this is prolonged the project. All right.
My second motion.
There's been a motion in second, uh, to table this item until the next facilities meet, all that's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here and none, motion passes.
I ask when the next meeting be, because we're, we're rushing into this time, we've got to talk to, to them quickly and meet again.
Once, once I have a conversation, I, I, I'm not gonna say, say a date right now, but once I have a conversation with Mr. Monroe and Dr. Watson and also with Mr. Moore, we'll make a decision and then we'll put it out, so everybody that can be in the tennis room to do so. All right. Uh, moving right along to see the update on the physical and security assessments, uh, the architectural alliance group, uh, if you will come up, I know we have some, some, some literature here before us to go on some things, uh, we appreciate you convening here, but you can just let us know what school we starting with and then we can kind of go from there.
Well, from what Mr. Monroe and Dr. Watson, Mr. Moore, we're not gonna go through every school because it's extensive, but we'll be here for hours. Okay, well, I do. What we're doing is, is we're presenting you, uh, basically, we, uh, let me just start, we've, uh, evaluated every school and now we're compiling them into, um, the bookers. Uh, we, when we met with every principal and everything, we brought ten tonight and the next ten will be by the twenty-sixth. Okay. This will give you time to review all of this, because it's a lot of information.
Understood, but if you would, do me one favor, I see one of my principals here, uh, Jazz Clark, uh, and just for, for her and for, for the rest, and I know we've been there, uh, a lot, I don't know who. I don't even know who Lesston is in this. Okay, nice to meet you, nice to meet you, I don't know if Lesston is in this.
Yeah, Lesston is in there too.
Okay, I kind of know, and I'm not being biased, please excuse me, but I do know that we kind of been on a, on a, 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 a real long time coming with Jazz Clark. Uh, and that's why they was kind of at the top of the list, but if you would, uh, go with whatever structure they already gave you instructions to do.
Well, basically, we went to Mr. Brandon, appreciate you and, uh, board, Mr. Moore, Secret General, Dr. Watson, the fellows that worked extensively, please do have with us. We went to each school, we basically sit down with all the principals, and when we found out we even had new principals, I went back to that with this Heather, and we met with each individual new principals. And there's a couple more, I have, Mr. Houston's been moved far across, I had a meeting. Uh, the number one thing, when we met with every principal was safety, that was not building the school, not building the new gym, it was safety. Every one of them wanted safety for their kids and this and that, they wanted protection, they want fencing, they wanted a secure entrance, and then every one of them wanted a resource officer. That was the top of the list of every one of them, even the new ones. So that's where we were, we were hired to look at the security portion of it, and then we were hired to do the physical later, so we combined it. When you go through this report, each one of them, it's gonna have some things upfront, how we did and what we did, just normal stuff, and then it will get into the things y'all had done up to this point to help to do what we need to do, and then it has a building data, it shows exactly what the school is, when it was, uh, built, the, the years, what kind of materials it was, and additions were and things like that. Then we get into the code compliance, where your ADA issues, no elevator, Jazz car, things like that, we, we got into that, and then we looked at a building evaluation physically, specifically list everything we ran across, like I said, the existing marquee sign is, is, is not working, it needs to be replaced, basically, at all. But some of these things are gonna be very redundant at every school, but each one of them has specific needs and different things, and then we got into. And then we got into, from the outside of the building to the inside of the building, and then we even evaluated the security needs, they're putting fencing, putting, uh, single point of entries, fob systems on all the schools, uh, recommending, uh, clear backpacks, so principal didn't like it, some did. We recommended it, that'd be up to the principal, that's up to y'all. Those are the kind of things you'll see, we, we talked about in each one of these. Then we got into where I have pictures of all the items at each school that is horrendous. These schools are horrendous, I've been doing this for twenty-five, thirty years in this, uh, city, and these schools are horrendous majority. It's almost embarrassing to even talk about it, because when you go to some of these schools, like Neville Junior, and Royce Neville Junior, and Jazz Clark, you know what you got. Fifty-two, nineteen fifty-two, most of them was built, they look like nineteen fifty-two cars, that's how old they are, they banged up, and it's horrible condition. And you'll see that, I didn't hold back, I specifically told like it was, you learn that's how I am. It needs to be replaced, and if you go through, you'll see all the pictures we did, and then you get down to it, one that y'all all be, probably concerned about, it's physical security needs data. I specifically listed each item, what it costs. So, like I said, if you put new fob systems, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, these are numbers that y'all can pick and choose, however y'all wanna do it, or put them together, add them together, however you wanna do it. That way you got a witness of what it costs, only numbers you can put in there. I got them off a national average, I got them off of current projects that we are doing, and actually current projects other architects, because we got a good report of other architects, and information from contractors within this area, and in the Shreveport area, and Alexander area. And these are how we compile our numbers, now, right now, the numbers are crazy, we've got NADA down the road. They jacked everything up on price, and so this number can fluctuate, and we've gotta put a good number in, and you will get, and say, oh, it don't cost that much, because once you time you did it, do all that. It does cost a lot, and these numbers are from the very, you know, like I said, we just try to get a good average on it, on, on these numbers and things like that. Like the new P A system, you know, seventy-five thousand, we talked to him, they just got a bid the other day on one, it was not seventy-five thousand dollars, eight thousand dollars, for a new P A system. So these are, some of them are real time numbers, but like you said, the longer ways, if you get a lot of these things out together, so if you move into all new P A systems, where every school, you bid it at one time, one guy, you probably get a better price. And then, the next page, they put a conceptual overall thing, like at Jazz Clark, we recommended a new gymnasium there, and, and stage. We put a site plan, showed it, every school have a site plan with recommendation of fencing, a new building, new front entry, or whatever you want. And then, you know, some of them, we put a conceptual plan of what the building to look like, just an idea. It's not, you know, whoever architect you hire, or whatever you wanna do, it's kinda give you idea how big the space is and what they need. Then the next page, it'll show building root data, this is something Mr. Monroe, we've worked on before, every school, you know now exactly what's root needs to be replaced, and what needs to be replaced, by code. So you can look at it, and it'll tell you need to replace the next two to four years, if it's expired, if it's going like that. And then on some of them, we talked about where you need to buy the land to make this area to do it, and we kinda showed you an idea about that, so where's, where you gotta expand and what it is. So that's basically what every project will have. Pretty much every school needs new ceilings and lines, I'm just gonna tell you, every school has ML tape, and that's the newest one. That's probably the only one who don't need ceiling and lines. These TA bulbs and TT bulbs, they're like Indian desks, you just film them, we need LED lights, these are just simple things that is out there, and a lot of, uh, exterior windows are energy efficient, that's the like of majority of schools, that, and just kinda give you an idea that how most of these are, you know Jazz Clark, the mold windows has been there since nineteen fifty-nine. So it's just all these kind of things like that, that we've got numbers on, and they kinda fluctuate, we got walkways that are leaking, we got children walking in water with rains, these are drainage issues at a lot of schools, especially Lexington and Jazz Clark, where water, good rain, you'll see two foot water, up to a foot, you know, can't go over. And, and we tried to break down each school, and each one of them individual, and we're finishing up on the other booklets, and what happened, you know, it's a lot of information that we've compiled, we didn't rec, we only recommended what the physical need and security of that building is. So, if we recommended to tear down that school and build another one, we gave you the numbers to do it, so that you decide, either do it, or not do it, or fix it up. If, you know, if you're gonna spend ten million on a school, what do you get for ten million, or should you tear it down, build it?
You're gonna start.
I ventured Neville Junior High.
I ventured Neville Junior High, Royce Neville Juniors, and tear down the three, Carwood, Carroll, uh, Carwood, Carroll Hall, and Jefferson.
Some of the schools are a lot worse things than, than any other schools.
Right.
So, how, uh, in what, what manner are we going to address the renovations of them? By, by the year they were built?
We started with the first high school, and, and Jazz Clark.
Okay.
Well, the main thing is, is we looked at the school physically, and that's when I went in, and it's like Roy Snelling, Roy Neil, so, Jeff, she's part of that. When I went in that school, and by the time I look at it, I've gotta spend twelve million dollars for ten to get it up. Neville Junior High, same way, I gotta spend twelve to fifteen, it needs brand new HVA system, they got wind of it and something. So when you start looking at numbers of ten, twelve, or fifteen, you're like, I might as well spend thirty to build a new school. It's kinda, you know, it's kinda like the old used heart, you keep putting money in, it's gonna keep getting broken down, and there's a point you gotta draw a line. And we look at it in that perspective, but also as a whole, but more of a physical thing, where you just can't keep putting money in something, and like this, you gotta look at it. Now, that's a decision of board to do, do I wanna do it or not, or we just change ways of doing it. But I'll just put, excuse me, Mr. Brandon, just put this in for a second, you got nineteen schools, and that includes your ass. If you have five million dollars at each school, five times nineteen is ninety-five million. So that just gives you an idea if a school needs five million, or one needs twelve, so you really need about two million. Just gotta give you an idea to cover all that, I know those numbers are big, but that's, that's where we at, since two thousand nine, when I did this originally.
I see, I see the booklets are pretty extensive, and, and you did break it down pretty well, uh, but, uh, I, I know we're not going through each individual, uh, but I don't feel good without leaving here, without asking the two principals, uh, and I'll start with you, Ms. Luzuzza, uh, do you have any questions based on what you saw? Uh, any concerns that, or anything that you see missing? Uh, I would like to yield and give you, both of you all, a chance to speak, if y'all don't mind.
Um, we, we met recently, and we met twice, so the first time, we did one, um, you know, needs assessment, and then we came back, we did another needs assessment. And, all of these things on here are needed, but of course, I know we won't get everything on this, this list here, but some of it are more needed than others. So, we did talk about what the higher needs are, because of money, and, um, I don't really see anything that, that we need that's not on here, so, but if I could pick and choose what we need, you know, we'll talk about that, that'll.
Yes, ma'am, well, that, that'll probably come from, you know, of course, we will consider, because you in the building, but also allowing, uh, Dr. Watson, Mr. Monroe, and of course, our superintendent to play a role in that as well, along with, along with, you know, Mr. Wilson, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair Johnson, so, I think it's a good idea for the principals to consider prioritization, if we have wants and needs, right? We need this, hey, we want this to, right, and so we can prioritize. You're gonna get into, uh, a bonding situation, because once we go over certain debt service coverage and bonding amount, I, I, I'm guessing it's between fifty and sixty million, we can go up to. Anything over that, uh, we're gonna have to go out to the public for a vote, right? So, there's, there's considerations for that as well, so there's a lot of things in the pot, we're gonna have to look into.
Yeah, and I know you're very, uh, abreast on that with, with your background, Ms., Ms. Hanlon, I'll come to you.
Um, I wanted to suggest that we start getting on the schedule work groups, um, for each school site, to really line out what those priorities are, and I, I think because we have, because we've seen some issues, um, and I will use the Carroll Band Building as an example, and we don't have the right people at the table, sometimes we end up with an inferior prop, prop product, or not quite what we wanted. So, I don't wanna leave it just on a principal, because principals do come and go, um, we should have parental input, we should have architecture input, those kinds of things, but I, I mean, it, you know, it's, it's a lot to put either on Ms. Monroe, or, or Dr. Watson, or one person, but as a district, we've gotta figure out what, where are the priorities here, and then how are we gonna move forward? So I guess, I threw out a suggestion, but I'm asking the committee, how should we proceed as a district to address these issues, what's next, what are we gonna be doing?
Well, based on what I see from this, this standpoint, uh, and, and yes, the principal is very important to answer, especially from the, the leaps of, of the beginning, because they are the people that's in the building every day. Uh, and then, secondly, once you get to talking about that, you know, they have people to answer to as far as, you know, uh, our superintendent along with our chief operation, Mr. Monroe, and that's what they're hired to do, you know, it's, it's not gonna, it's, it shouldn't be too much weight, uh, for them, because that's, that's their job, uh, and I think they are built to be able to handle that. Uh, so, if, you know, and, and I don't want you to take this wrong, I, I don't see how much of, of, of parental involvement with this situation would be necessary. Uh, just looking at the physical assessments and the safety assessments, I think that's why we started with the professional, uh, but he can kinda line out of those things out. And then as a board, we kinda got ourselves with, you know, hearing the things that, that our principals face on a daily basis, and then kinda collab together to go ahead and make sure we make it the best thing that can, uh, we can do for the dollar amount that we have available. And then, with the dollar amount, you know, based on what Mr. Wilson said, we have to prioritize at that point, uh, you know, what's more at need at that time, and, and at what schools. Uh, but then we still gotta keep equality in, in, in the whole process as well.
So is the, so what's the timeline in the process, so as a board, we're expecting then our experts to come back and say, okay, we've got this, here's what we want the board to do, is that what we're?
Yes, that's what it's best, because they are, they did do, uh, prioritize as well, that's what's high priority for safety, for us, you know, the well-being of our kids, you know, with the flooding and all that. Once he come back with that, we started with this ten, once he come back with the other nine, uh, then at, at that point, I would suggest that the board then we start making decisions immediately. And then kinda seeing where we get on the financial stage for trying to go out for a bid, a bond, and, and et cetera.
And I could find out what we can ballpark and go up to, without having to go to the public for a vote from a bonding standpoint. I think we're trying to hide anything, or anything else like that, but it can set the parameters to let us know, if we're gonna spend, let's say it's sixty thousand, but we want to spend eighty, well, you know, then we got a decision to make, we wanna take it out of the vote, or is there twenty, twenty million in there that we don't need now, that's important to see.
Right, uh, Ms. Luzuzza, I know you can, not quick.
I was just, um, to answer Ms. Hanlon, his, um, proposal does have like a critical need.
Right, yeah, I saw it.
Just a need, so, you know, he has to kinda prioritize us.
Thanks, Miss Moore. When I went, when I met you guys, when I met with every principal, I'm gonna commend every one of your principals, not one of them went out there and said, I want a new school. None of them, they all specifically said, I want security first, I want my kids safe, then they wanted an environment so they can teach, like Jazz Clark, they need a gym and a stage. They need that, and it, and that is a need, and that's critical for that school. And they need elevators, so every one of your principals did, even the new ones that came in that I was kinda nervous about, Miss Heather, because I had never met her before, she was, it was almost like they went to the same meeting that we were in before, with, uh, with Tony. They all said the same thing, and they spoke the same thing, and every one of them was on board, and that was one good thing this time, because when I did it two thousand nine, well, they had pie in the sky thing, boy, it was all over. But this time, it was very strictly the way it was, and that's why we, it was easier for me to break down everything, basically, on what the principal wanted.
Right, Ms. Hanlon.
I, I actually wanted, I know we've got some, um, parents here of, of students at Lexington in particular, one of the items that popped up, that was the need for SROs at every single school. And, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned, because that has been brought up, I mean, you know, for years. And we're still sitting here on our hands, waiting for a school shooting, and I know they're concerned about it, that's why they're here, that's not the only reason, but I'm concerned, but I know we're all concerned about it.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's not enough to be concerned, and it's not enough to have thoughts and prayers, that's not gonna happen, we, we've gotta, if we can't do physical changes right off the bat, I, I really would recommend that for safety and security of these schools, that this, this facility committee recommend moving forward with requiring SROs at every school.
Yes, ma'am. And, and you know, we've talked about this before, uh, the only thing that I think, because it could have been under your leadership, Ms. Hanlon, I think the problem was that they said they didn't have enough officers or something like that, along that line, then I think we said something about going to the sheriff's offices and trying to get those.
I met with, uh, Mr. Cherry, is that his name?
Yeah.
Cherry, I met with him, not once or twice, I met with him at events, this was with, with Mr. Johnson, and, uh, we talked about this.
Yes, sir.
There is plenty of officers and people that can work, it's either private people, sheriff department, uh, police department, private, I mean, there, he says there are numerous of people, there are numerous of retired people, that can do it, that are certified to do it. So that's really not an issue, it's more of an issue of money to provide that service for that person.
The board has to approve those positions.
That's fine, Mr. Wilson, then, Ms. Kennedy, I think Mr. Wilson will come to you, see if there's anything.
I'm all about returns, I'm all about SROs, and all of that, but it's not the fantasy that some people think it is. It will deter a lot, and I totally agree with that, but people can still, that have evil intent, figure out ways, but it can deter a lot. And so, I'm, 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 I'm in favor of it, I just don't want people thinking, do this and this, we're perfect, we're good, so.
Mr. Brandon, what we basically did is, is we put a fence around every school, we, uh, put fob systems on every door, so the only way you can get in is a fob, and, and that. We had single point of entries for the, uh, guests, visitors, may come in, and what I'm saying, a point is, is you go to a spot, they look at you, they let you in another spot, then they look at you and say, yeah, we're gonna let you in now, it's almost three steps, and that's why we presented that. And then we also presented lighting everywhere, lighting is key to a person, if it's well lit, they, they, they'll leave you alone. When you go to a gas station, which one you go to, the one's got the most to get out, you're not gonna stop that one's over dark, even though it's one you use, you won't. And we looked at it that way, and then we looked at things for the kids to help prevent them, we looked at metal detectors at every school, they're only ten thousand dollars piece. I mean, you gotta go to the airport, you gotta take shoes off and do everything, what's the difference going down here to court house? All these kids, and they are used to that.
Yeah, we just gotta make sure that, that, that aligns with our time, so.
Right, and those are simple things that we recommended, and we recommended, like, if it is a lockdown, there's these little gadgets you shove under the door, that they had the, uh, principal many roughed it, twenty dollars from Home Depot, those are things that we recommended in there, that these are economical things that we can do immediately, like, Mr. Wilson said, it's not gonna deter, you don't, you got crazy, crazy, crazy. But you still do what you can to prevent, as he always says, minimize, minimize, minimize.
And it isn't deterrence.
Yes, but it's, it's not. It's not perfect, but it's about the best you can get.
So, Ms. Kennedy, I, I would yield to you at this time, if you have any questions and concerns, uh, because you are here, we want to be able to recognize you, to make sure, you know, give you that same respect.
Thank you. I've had Dr. Bush cow and Mr. Monroe to talk about just some basic safety things, that I feel are not as expensive in this, that secure my building, or I help secure my building quickly. Because there are some things, like, when you walk in my building, you can come right up to the front window, there is no glass, if there were everything, they're right over the counter. There are some things like that, uh, my back door is exposed in the morning, because my teachers are parked in the back, coming in the back, if we could have a key fob there. There are some things that can happen really quickly, without this amount of money, that I would secure my building in the meantime, and I would appreciate to do some of those things, and that's when Mr. Monroe came out and talked to me in the meantime, a couple weeks ago, and he told me that this was coming, and that's why I came here today.
Yes, ma'am, we appreciate you for showing up and speaking up for your school, uh, and that, that's the steps that need to happen, uh, Mr. Monroe?
Yes, sir, uh, there again, this, this is, well, it's very touching for me, because when you see this on TV, we are not exempt from any of that happening with our people, and every school that we went to, safety was the number one priority. And every school that we went to, safety was the number one priority. Understand that, not just for the kid, but for entire staff. Uh, this day and time, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Like I said, we, we not exempt from it. So a lot of things that we got and tonight, this is my first time seeing a lot of this. I haven't went through all of the book yet. I want to give it to you all, but if you all can look through this, you all can meet with your students, that's a new district. Uh, and give them time to look over this. It's going to have to be any changes, whatever modifications, we can do that. But we need to try and get everything together before we bring it to you all as a group. I've been, I've asked them about how long it's going to take to do the remaining sites. They say we'll have it done by the end of this month. So if we can get that, if we can give this to you all, and I want all the board members to get it first. So the school's saying, so, so once they get it and then we can get copies so they can see what's involved. Then we can kind of come back as a group and study and prioritize what we need.
So, so one, one question for you and we about to go, get ready to adjourn this meeting. Uh, the window that she's referring to, I'm not familiar with the school. Uh, is this, is this something that, that can be done, uh, for that, at this time or, or we still need to kind of wait? And you know, I'm gonna take you all recommendations, not to an oppression.
And I appreciate that. I think it's not just that school.
They need them.
Uh, we got other schools that have similar situations. So when I go back, I went back and I was looking at the schools and how old our schools are. They average sixty-three and a half years old. We got schools nineteen, twenty, to the last one we built was in twenty. Most of our schools are in seventy, seventy-three, seventy-four, ninety-five, the Neville, uh, it goes on and on. So we got issues with these schools. And we got some serious problems, I mean, serious things that we're going to have to do modify to get them what we're going to give, take out of the system.
Okay.
So if they were just, most of the times, to bring this to you all and give it to all of you all so that they can finally see what's in this package, I appreciate it.
No problem. I'm gonna take these last couple of questions. We appreciate you.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I don't know your name, so I don't, I can't call you by name, but yes, ma'am.
Oh, would you like to speak from here or?
Whatever you like. Long as you make sure you project so everybody can hear you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak at this meeting. Um, I've been before this, uh, committee before and before the school board before talking about these same issues. I've had individual conversations with many people in this room about these exact issues since twenty twenty-two. But my first question would be, I heard, um, the architect, uh, thank you so much for your report and your hard work. I heard you say this is an update from a report you did in two thousand and nine. My question would be, if I may, in two thousand and nine, was that number one same request for security issue from every school an SRO? Was an SRO mentioned and recommended by your, at that time? Okay.
In two thousand and nine, it really wasn't an issue.
You're exactly right. Because in two thousand and nine, there weren't as many school shootings, were there? And you would agree with me that it has drastically increased since two thousand and nine.
Actually, all of that happened, what, twenty, twenty-one, years ago?
Correct. Correct. And so I am begging and pleading with this board to make good on its former promises and concerns about an SRO. We can do that now. We don't have to wait, we don't have to bid it out. We have been in talks since, at least I have, with many members in this room since twenty twenty-two. In fall of twenty twenty-two, my child, my oldest child started Lexington. And I was shocked and dismayed to learn when I walked in that there was not an SRO. Could not believe it. I just assumed that they were at every school. How naive of me. So what did I do? I immediately reached out to school board members and my administration at Lexington. And they had the same concerns. Tony McCarty said she'd been working on it and asking for it and brought up other physical issues with the building that weren't just an SRO. But this door that has been unlocked and open every morning for hours has been an issue since before my child started. The school is not secure. We do not have one point of entry. It is open. This is an easy fix we can do right now that doesn't cost a bunch of money. That we don't have to wait on a, a meeting in the next month from everyone else. We've got to do these things now to protect our children. What happened yesterday? We had two school shootings, one on a lower school campus, one on a university. People died. What are we waiting for? So fall of twenty twenty-two, I took up this banner and I said, this is what I'm going to do. I'm not going to stop. And everyone was helpful. Uh, October fourth of twenty twenty-two, you were the committee, uh, the board president, Mr. Johnson, correct?
I don't remember.
I got the minutes.
I'm not, hey, I'm not saying you, I'm just being honest with you, I'm not.
But let me read them to you. From October fourth of the general school board meeting, Mr. Johnson said he noted, we formed a new safety committee on that day. And you noted, the concerns are being heard and the board is going to do whatever to make this happen. Once this committee is formed, the safety committee, he will move forward with any policies that need to be formed with the Monroe City School District, as well as taking it to the facilities committee and so on to continue our schools being safe. Miss Hanglin was the chair of that safety committee meeting. Miss Cooper was on the board and Mr. Salisbury was on the board. They accepted those positions and took up that banner. Then on November first, twenty twenty-two, we had our first board meeting of the safety committee. Followed by a general meeting after that. Many members in this room were there and they agreed that SROs were an issue. Mr. Wilson supported it. Mr. San Panero supported it. Mr. Moore, in your former capacity, you were there and you spoke first and spoke for a very long time and supported the implementation of an SRO at every school. We had just had a very traumatic start of the school year, if you remember. You and I spoke on the phone about issues and I'll get, I'll get to that in a few minutes about our conversation. Miss Hanglin agreed with it. Miss Cooper, you were there, you were in support of it. Everyone in the room until the end was in support of it. This was, what can we do? We've got to get this done now. That was in twenty twenty-two.
Yes, ma'am. Kennedy, and I, I don't, I don't mean to, to cut you off. I, I don't think, I, I understand your cry and I see your passion with it. I do get it. It, I, I believe everybody in this room would like to see our schools safer. We would like to see our schools have SROs. Uh, I don't know if you just recall it, once we just had this, we were just speaking about it and I told Miss Hanglin, uh, I thought it was a shortage and I thought that's what we was told about, uh, the sheriffs and the Monroe Police Department. I'm, I'm not just making it up because just as well as you, I have kids in the school system as well.
Right.
So I, I want my kids to be safe as well. So and, and it's not just at Lexington or Jazz Clark. Like, like Ms. Monroe just said, these are some very, very, very old schools. These are some very old schools and some measures have been taken. It's just not all at this, at this point of, of what's, what's needed. Yes, do we need more? Yes, ma'am. I agree. I'm, I'm not against you. I understand and I feel the passion of what you're saying and you're giving us a track record of it. I understand. I'm still on that same board with you. So yes, ma'am, we want to do that, but I just received information that I had no clue about. That, that they say, okay, they got plenty of officers that can do it. So now at this time, the board can, can reconvene and we can try to figure out how or is it a grant out there? Because I think we, we talked about that before. Was it a grant out there that helped support this? Uh, so, yeah, those are some things that have been talked about. So I do understand your cry and I don't think anybody in this building disagrees with you. Uh, but at this point now, because I have written out right now to tell Miss, Miss Robinson, so before we adjourn for our next meeting, let's make sure we address these SROs and care articulable. Because those are the two things that, that needs to be handled, like more on an immediate basis than we just discussed in this, in this, uh, meeting on tonight. Uh, because we're still waiting on other schools that have to be done. We have to secure them all.
Senator Johnson, I have something.
Yes.
As, as we're speaking, I'm texting right now, uh, Marshall Cherry, uh, to, to schedule a meeting to see how, my question was, and how quickly can officers be available? There is a difference in resource officers, officers being available. Because resource officers have to go through the proper training. That was the shortage on actual resource officers. They have to go through training, but, but so what I would say to the board superintendent, I would schedule a meeting with our, our three law enforcement agencies immediately to see how we can move forward immediately off of the details, uh, in our buildings.
Well, that, that's the stuff, Miss Hanglin, you can stay there just in case, hold on just a second.
I just, I wanted to make a suggestion that I think the first step is for the superintendent to make the recommendation to add those positions. And then, once we know that we have to hire those positions, then we can figure out those details of where to get them, how to pay them, but we can't do that without having the positions first. So the positions need to be created and I think because we've been kicking this can down and we, we all want it, but it just seems like we're stalled out. We've got to take some steps and I think it would be a good big step for the committee to recommend or for the superintendent to recommend that the board add those positions to our.
General, uh, because that's what we're covering, right? Just more.
General Vaughn, two thousand one zero seven.
Okay. So I, I believe he just said, he, he's, he just got commissioned, uh, Mr. Cherry. So he did just say also that he will meet with all three, uh, and I guess that would be.
Sheriff, sheriff.
Uh, so we can kind of start there and then we can go to creating the positions like Miss Hanglin recommended. And then we can move accordingly, but I do know SROs do have to go through a certain training and certain classes in order to be able to, to work in that capacity.
Yes, and I did research that and I was spoken with those institutional law enforcement who's in charge of training these people. And they hold, uh, yearly, bi-yearly, and they have told me that they will come do one especially for Monroe City. I've done all this. I've done this work. I've been doing it for years. I don't want us to reinvent the wheel when we have a package previously put together. So I would offer my assistance and help with anything possible because in that meeting on November first, twenty twenty-two, we had already spoken with the sheriff. We had already spoken with the chief of police. The chief of, the Monroe City sent police officers to that meeting and we told y'all, we're ready to do it. And they said, it's not a staffing issue. I got a quote from Monroe V D on how much it would cost and they were cutting us a deal. So please, I urge you, do not delay on this.
And respectfully, in, in twenty twenty-two, they may have actually said it was not a staffing issue. But just as recently as this past school year, meeting with the chief of police, he says it's a staffing issue. Or SRO.
You're exactly right for his current staff.
Not his current staff.
Did any further discussions with him? We have, like it's already been mentioned tonight, numerous retired police officers who are ready to get back and take these positions up because they're not going back on the street.
That's, that's the reason.
So with those retired people, we don't want to, and please don't take this the wrong way. We don't want to get no old men, no old women in there that can't move and be of no assistance.
I completely agree with you. These are, uh, men and women who started their career right out of high school, got to retire early or left under different changes of administration. Still are paid certified. I have a whole list.
Look, okay, well, there's one, one, and, and once again, I understand your passion and I don't want you to beat us up.
I'm not. I just want to make sure we get it done this time.
And, and also that some of those things have to be done on the police side versus on the school board side. You know, like Miss, I, I can agree with Miss Hanglin what she said. Okay, we can create the positions and be ready to take care of our financial obligations, but then on the police side, they have a role and a responsibility to do as well. Uh, but we are, our superintendent has made, uh, said that he, in his own record, that, and, and I know you'll find it. Uh, then, then we'll start having these conversations to try to get it done. And I'm also speaking, I'm gonna talk with Miss Robinson by the time this meeting ends so she can make the notes. So I can make sure I have this for our next meeting and then in the, in the meantime, you'll be having those meetings and conversations. Uh, I see a few hands. I'm gonna get our committee first and I got you, Mr. Wilson.
With, with my last point, thank you so much for listening. I know it took up a lot of time. But also to second what Dr. Kennedy said, there are some cheap, inexpensive things that could be done immediately to secure our school tomorrow. So I'd ask that they consider adding that to your priority list, make you add a number three, because our campus is open.
They all are.
You kind of hit on my question. I was gonna ask Mr. Moore, Dr. Watson, Mr. Monroe, can we go ahead and secure those? I would like the back doors, check these schools that have that same situation that Lexington has with the back door that won't, you know, a lot of proximity ridder to Madden or something like that, like it's fob in and out.
And with glass to protect our staff.
Yes, stuff like that, that immediate stuff. Can we go ahead and, because that does not appear for by the board.
There again, there again, it comes with a cost. And there again, I always ask, well, out of state, there's a lot of schools that we're talking about.
Yeah, I know it's not just one school.
So we're talking about one, if we're going to talk about that one, we can talk about the other one.
That's exactly, that's what I was saying. Go through this and run that.
That's, that's why I want you all to have this and look at it and prioritize it. Have everybody see it, have everybody have a seat.
And I would leave you with this. What does the life of one child cost?
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Wilson?
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, you can, you can have an ad hoc committee. And I think you've got a chairperson here, a board member here, a COO there, that can meet as soon as possible, come up with recommendations. Uh, the superintendent has, uh, leeway for each, each specific school request up to ten thousand dollars without board approval. Now it's got to be presented in a formal way, yada, yada, yada. But if it came through the ad hoc committee through you, I think that, you know, would be, uh, a way to expedite the situation and, and, and do it in a way that makes sense and can be economical to get, get some immediate situations resolved.
Yeah, you are right. You're right. Miss Cresser?
I just wanted to ask, to add, uh, thank you so much and I appreciate all that y'all are looking at. It's very important. Um, can we find out how many schools do not have resource officers now?
Only high schools.
Only high schools.
No junior high?
No.
That's, that's.
No junior high. All high schools, that's it.
That's it.
Now, now, now.
I think.
Now, Neville's guy will go over here periodically and then one at Carroll High School will go over there. And then the one at Wassman, they kind of mingle over there, but most of the time they're every high chance, all from three.
And one other comment before we leave. Um, now, now, committee member up there would love, as you and I have served on this committee before in the past, when we did Wassman, Jim, and Carroll.
Can we get some more of y'all so we can hear, please? Now we can discuss it. I don't want to.
No. Um, I would just give a suggestion and recommendation. When we served on a committee and worked with Mr. Monroe, at every school where you go and are looking at your architects, meeting with them. It was very informative that Miss Schelling set up when we met with McElroy. We had a janitor there, we had teachers, so that we saw everything. And once a month, the architects met with the facility committee, I mean, laid it out. Because you remember at Wassman, we didn't have a janitor's office. There were so many little things that more eyes looked at it. And right now, where you got this opportunity, don't forget to include academics. Things are changing right now. The courses are changing. So when you look at remodeling any building, wherever it be, please take into consideration from their, their standpoint, as well as parents and people that have served before. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you all for your, your, your participation and, and your input on today. Everything was heard. Uh, we, we would definitely try to move forward with, with the things that, that, that is up our priority and we do give you all. Uh, Miss Robinson, uh, I think I repeated it enough, so I think you already got it. Uh, so when me and Dr. Watson and Mr. Monroe and Superintendent Moore, uh, get together to, uh, make the next. Uh, so when me and Dr. Watson and Mr. Monroe and Superintendent Moore, uh, get together to, uh, make the next agenda, make sure we do have care ticket booths, SROs, if we don't have any other information what we can bring back to this committee and to the public about moving forward, uh, going, going forward to our next meeting. Uh, once again, I appreciate you all for your participation, thank you all for coming out. Can I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion and a second, all this in favor, say aye. I'll oppose here and none. We adjourn.